I'd like to call our meeting to order. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda, and I believe Mr. Bernhardt has a modification to suggest.
It's on the minutes.
Oh, that's on the minutes. On the agenda itself, is there a motion we adopt the agenda? Second. All those in favor vote aye. Opposed vote no. It's adopted. Now, the approval of the minutes.
Right. I just note that you have a revised section at the very end. During your elections, Commissioner Ponder stated that he was willing to serve on the Parks Board again. That's in the minutes, but it didn't reflect that Chairman McLean appointed him, which is his function, so we just needed to add that in there to that. So, that's in there now.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that minor change?
There's a move.
They moved and seconded. All in favor vote aye. Opposed vote no. Minutes are approved. At this point, we recognize council members who might wish to speak at the beginning as opposed to later on in conjunction with a specific item. Are the council members present? Councilman Holloman, would you like to speak now?
I'll speak now.
Good. You're on.
Thank you, members of the commission. Jason Holloman, council representative for District 24, 4210 Park Avenue. There are actually two items on the agenda today that relate to District 24. One, and I apologize if I haven't looked at the number, but one of them is the old Hostess Bread Store at the corner of 42nd and Charlotte. That is a rezoning from IR to MULA.
Item A.
Item A. Item A. Thank you. The developers in this project came to me a few weeks ago. We've talked about it. They've had a community meeting. This is something that I think the community is quite supportive of. I mean, the idea of going to the A version of zoning in the Charlotte corridor is a positive thing. Eliminating industrial uses along the corridor is a positive thing. There are a few, I think, logistical questions that people have that want to talk through, but all of the support that I've, or all of the comments I've seen so far have been supportive. So, with that, I would ask you to approve that as a step forward in the Charlotte corridor. And then also, item number three, which is a single-lot rezoning. My only comment on that is that that is not a rezoning that's come to the community at this point. I just learned about it on the public notice. My bias to the applicant was that it might be better received if they had that community conversation before coming to you. Obviously, you can make a recommendation on it, but typically, there was a very deliberate downzoning in my district several years ago to go from R to RS, and other requests have been met with concern because people wanted to stay with the single-family model. I somewhat expect that'll be the case here, but my advice to the applicant was to defer and have that conversation before coming to you. That said, you can certainly choose to act, and I can deal with it when it comes to the council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's see. Are there other council members anyone sees? There seem to be no other council members present, so we'll ask Jennifer to present items for deferral and withdrawal.
Thank you. We have four items for deferral or withdrawal. The first is item number one, 2013 SP-020-001, 906 Bosco Bell. A request to rezone from R8 to SPR and for final site plan for property located at 906 Bosco Bell Street and located within the Edgefield Historic Preservation District to permit up to two detached residential dwelling units, and the staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number seven, 2013 Z-019 PR-001, a request to rezone from CN to RM9A zoning for property located at 5516 Kentucky Avenue. The staff recommendation is to defer to the July 25, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Item 12, 2013 DT-001-001. This is Sambuca, a request for a modification to DTC. A request to appeal the denial of a modification to the downtown code signage regulations to allow for a portion of the sign for Sambuca to be located above the Yve Line for property located at 1209 Pine Street. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And item 13, contract amendment number two between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and the Nashville Civic Design Center authorizing additional work on the development of booklets stemming from the Civic Design Center and UT Knoxville Studio work. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
You've heard the staff report on the four items for deferral. Number one, seven, 12, and 13. Any discussion?
I have a question.
No, I wrote down the wrong one.
I have a question.
One, five, 12, and 13?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
I just have a question about why are we deferring number 13? Rick, do you know? I don't know where on that one.
They hadn't finalized the negotiations. The MPO hadn't.
So, it'll just come back?
Right. Right.
Are there any other questions or comments about these four items?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have one question about item 12. Is that, is the deferral at the request of the applicant?
I believe so.
Yes, the applicant's requested deferral. They have submitted a revised plan that is going to be reviewed by MDHA, I think, next week.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve items one, five, 12, and 13 for deferral? All in favor of that motion? Vote aye. Opposed vote no. Those are deferred. Now, Jennifer, if you will go over the consent agenda with us.
Sure. I'll begin with our legal notice. As information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. For the items on consent, a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Our consent agenda today has several items. The first is item number two, 2012 Z-028 PR-001, a request to rezone from R6 to MUNA zoning for properties located on Eastland Avenue opposite Scott Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number three, 2013 Z-017 PR-001, a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to R8 zoning for property located at 15 West Lawn Court. Item number four, 2013 Z-018 PR-001, a request to rezone from IG to MUIA zoning for property located at 400 Davidson Street and located within the Floodplain Overlay District. Staff recommendation is to approve. Commissioners, item six was on your consent agenda. That's been removed from the consent agenda. The next item on the consent agenda is item number seven, 2013 Z-021 PR-001, a request to rezone from R10 to IWD zoning for a portion of a property located at 3301 Knight Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seven, 2013 Z-022 PR-001, a request to rezone from IR to MULA zoning for property located at 4111 Charlotte Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve.
That was item eight. That was item eight. You mentioned seven.
Item A. Oh, pardon me. Item number nine, 2013 S-001R-001, Subdivision Regulations Amendment. A request to amend Section 6-1 Improvements and Performance Bond of the subdivision regulations, and staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 10, 2004 P-036-002 Nashville West. A request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Nashville West Commercial PUD Overlay District on property located at 6702 Charlotte Pike, zoned SCR, to permit 12,775 square feet of retail and restaurant use where 12,000 square feet of retail and restaurant use was previously approved. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 11, 2003 S-267U-07 Westland Square. A request to accept the remaining bond amount to construct public sidewalks on the northern side of Medina Avenue in the Westland Square subdivision at a future time, zoned one and two family residential, R6. Staff recommendation is to approve. And then item 14, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to $15,000 from the Advanced Planning and Research Fund to the Greater Nashville Association of Realtors to match a Smart Growth Grant from the National Association of Realtors for necessary research associated with the Nashville-Davidson County General Plan. The research will involve the utilization of the Georgia Tech School of Architecture to develop intervention strategies associated with the retrofit of suburban development patterns in several specified areas in Davidson County. The total of this authorization and the total committed in Planning Commission Resolutions RS 2012-214 and RS 2013-17 shall not exceed $50,000. And finally, item 15, employee contract renewals for Jason Swagert and Bob Lehman.
Thank you. Some of that's going to take some real discussion. So, I have items two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 14, and 15.
Correct.
For the consent motion. Any discussion before we ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from item number eight, so I'll just recuse myself from the entire consent.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion that we approve by consent, those numbers that I just read out?
Move approval.
All those in favor vote aye. Opposed vote no. These items are approved. Thank you.
Commissioners, this is item number six, Adventure Circle in the North Nashville Community Plan. The request is for a zone change from the Industrial Warehousing and Distribution zoning district to MUL, which is mixed-use limited. Again, the site is in Metro Center. Staff recommends approval of this zone change. Here's a close-up of the site. It's a vacant site. The zoning, again, is industrial warehousing and distribution, which allows for generally light industrial uses and warehousing uses. And you can see that that zoning district covers most of the Metro Center area right now. The policy is district office concentration, and this district in the West Nashville Community Plan recommends the transition of zoning in this area from light industrial and warehousing and distribution to more of a mixture of office uses with residential and commercial uses throughout as well. And so, this zoning district, this proposed MUL zoning district would be consistent with this district office concentration plan. Here's a close-up of the site, and you can see some of the surrounding uses. Immediately to the south is kind of a large office use, and you can see some smaller office uses scattered throughout, mixed in with some warehouse and distribution uses as well. This MUL zoning district, again, is consistent with the district office concentration policy for, because it would allow the mixture of uses envisioned by the community plan, the residential, the commercial, and the office uses. Staff recommends approval.
All right. This item is open for public hearing. Are there those who would speak in favor of this item? If you would come forward and address our commission? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we need the applicant first, which may be this person.
Yes, it is.
All right. If you would give us your name, and you will have, under our rules, up to 10 minutes to make your presentation, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal if you would like.
Thank you. We will reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you very much. I'm Nancy Miller, and I'm the agent for Manish Diva. Manish is the applicant applying for the zoning change here. The zoning change is to construct a small hotel. This is, the brand that we're using is Candlewood Suites. Candlewood Suites Hotel is an extended-stay hotel. The concept is designed so that guests have the comforts of home in the comfort of their own hotel area. This brand particularly appeals to corporate, industrial, and government clients, and most of the time at Candlewood Suites or any of the Suites hotels that you may have stayed at, you know that you can engage in long-term stays there where you can work and do your work outside of your hotel room. Inside of your hotel room, then, you do have your kitchen and all the full amenities. A lot of our clients come to a hotel like this when they're working on assignments, projects, or training, and many of them are working on government business. So, we felt like this area particularly was attractive for this kind of build-out because it does surround itself with, as you know, a lot of the government offices. We have the approval of both the project oversight team for Metro Center. We've also reached out to some of the adjoining owners who are also going to be constructing on that site. We believe that this does support the vision of the Planning Commission, and we would ask that it be approved. Thank you.
Are there others in support of this item? If you're opposed to this item, we come forward to be heard at this time. We have had a request to speak.
Right.
Thank you. You have up to two minutes.
Okay. My name is Mark LeGasse, and if you look at the drawing where they're proposing this site, on the left of it is a warehouse, and that is now doubled in size and butts up to this property, and that's us. It's our family land. It's our family business. I've worked at that site now for 10 years. I work long hours. I come out late at night, and a residential component is not appropriate for this neighborhood. This neighborhood is industrial, and when you come out at night, you'd like to look across the parking lot and not see a soul. And for safety and for our own staff members coming out late at night, they don't like to see people walking through the parking lots, coming and going, because any time you see anybody in this neighborhood, it's, it makes you uncomfortable. This is, Metro Center is not a great neighborhood. The office portion is decent, but we're so far away from any nighttime residential units that if you see anybody, you're spooked. And for that reason, the daytime population should remain a daytime population, and we don't, we don't need a nighttime population butting up to our facility where we have trucks coming and going many hours of the day. We've got staff members entering and exiting many hours of the day, and we're all for another industrial-style facility there and/or a business or a bank or a daytime-style restaurant. But having population behind us 24 hours a day, being in this neighborhood, probably low-income, they might be children, they might be teenage kids, they'll be rummaging through our garbage, they'll be littering on our land, they'll be attempting to park on our parking lot as this hotel fills up with cars. There's, that's not a big site right there. That's, that's not going to support a hotel very well. And if you have any questions, we have. And they mentioned they reached out to neighbors. We are the main neighbor. We were never reached out to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is anyone else wishing to speak against this matter? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to have a two-minute rebuttal? I forgot. I'm new to this.
We certainly respect the comments made by Mr. Legasse, and of course, this is a very small hotel. It's under 100 rooms. It will be very well lighted. It does also not lend itself to attracting just stopover traffic. It's very specific to the business community. That's where we target our market, and I do believe that we can manage any issues that he feels is a concern at this point, and hopefully, they will not come to pass. So, we would request approval. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to abstain.
All right. Commissioner Atkins abstains. So, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
No.
Say a second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is closed. So, it's open for discussion by the commission. Anyone want to start us? Andre, why don't you start?
A question. When we give it mixed use, I'm just trying to think about the neighbor or other potential people's questions, when we're saying it could have residential. That could be any sort of residential that fits in that area. At some point in the future, it could have actual residential use with this zoning, correct?
That's true. Mixed-use limited would allow for multifamily, single-family.
Okay.
Residential.
And that's what the goal of the whole general plan of that area is, to try and have more of a mix of uses in that neighborhood so that there are some residents mixed in with the businesses and retail.
That's right.
Which might create more activity at night, for example, for restaurants and things.
And I think, I think that was the intent of the community plan, to allow that mix of uses that would allow for that, that diversity of uses for that site that could complement each other.
For legitimate businesses.
All right. Let's.
I do have one question. Are there any other hotels in this area that would fall under this zoning?
Not that I know of. But, you know, as you saw on the zoning slide, most of the surrounding zoning is IWD, and that by itself doesn't allow for a hotel. There is other MUL zoning, and there's one little pocket I see on there, but based on my site visit and what I know about this area, I don't know of any other hotels right here in Metro Center, but there are others, I think, along Rosa Parks.
Okay. Thank you. Just as a follow-up to that, there is a hotel on, in Metro Center.
It's on Rosa Parks.
Coming back into the area. What is, what is that?
We have, we have the Maxwell House, and we have the Marriott.
Marriott Swing Springs. Okay. Other comments, Commissioner?
No, thank you.
Honor, do you have any?
You know, I think my only comment is that, while I appreciate the adjacent property owner's concerns, you know, it could be that by getting people in this community, people will no longer be spooked when they see someone. In other words, having people there 24/7 in the area could have a positive impact on any crime or crime perception issues, just because there's eyes always overlooking the adjacent properties and, you know, could certainly deter potential crime in the area.
Commissioner Ponder?
My only thought is, it's a good plan, in my opinion. I think it does give us an example of reaching out to the neighbors when you're proposing something this significant. Otherwise, it's good.
Councilman?
I would just say, I have a Candlewood Suites in my district, and it's a, it's a very nice property. It appeals, as the applicant has said, to a more business-oriented clientele, and I really think that the gentleman who owns the adjacent property will find a much more positive impact from the placement of this here than he's expecting, so.
All right. Any further discussion or a motion?
I move that we approve staff's recommendation to approve.
All in favor of that motion? Vote aye. Opposed vote no. It is approved. With one abstention. Commissioner Atkins has abstained. I'm sorry. That's four. So, I guess we're now down to the end. We're down, we're down to fifteen. How about our new, are you going to talk about the, is somebody here for the first one? I believe we're now down to the last page of our agenda, number 15. 16. Which one? We're down to Historic Zoning Commission Report. All right. Parks and Recreation Report?
We did have one acquisition that was approved, and that was acceptance of the Buchanan Cemetery, which is now part of Parks Department. But it will be maintained by...
As soon as we do the council party.
Oh, okay. Just a little smear of technicality, I know. But it will be maintained by a...
Friends, a group.
Friends of the cemetery group.
Thank you. Is there an executive committee report?
You'd be doing that.
That would be me. Let's move on to, it's been a tough meeting. I believe we actually do have an executive director report.
We do. We do have several items, and I want to maintain your attention on this. We've got two employees, new employees here. I told them they had 15 minutes each to make a presentation in that, but...
You're out of order.
We'll, we'll just proceed without that. Andrew, you want to stand up? Andrew Collins, a new planner, too, in the design studio. Both of these are in the design studio with the masters from LSU. He's been in the public and the private sector. Brenda Diaz, Brenda is also a designer in the design studio, graduate from Clemson, which is something out of our, I guess, our office motto now, is if you've graduated from Clemson, and has done a lot of work, including work on Latino New Urbanism and other things, too. So, they're both online and ready to go.
Great. Welcome.
Couple of things I want to mention with regard to the budget. It's been a fairly hectic couple of weeks, anyway. The operating budget was, for the department, was approved with a 2% cut. The council did approve a new position for land development. I want to express the sincere thanks of the staff to Councilmember Claiborne, who actually carried the, did the heavy lifting for getting that done, and we appreciate that. This was really due to the increased workload that we have and stuff, and we appreciate that. Also, a couple of other items, the DA's office and the police department. Doug has been working with them. For those of you that don't, aren't aware of this, we do an awful lot of work in terms of preparing maps and actually are the expert presenters on matters that deal with closeness to schools and all that. If you know a lot of drug arrests, if you're in a certain distance of the school, you get, you get extra penalties if you're convicted, and we are, our office, the GIS staff, is the expert testimony, experts in that. So, the DA's office and the police have agreed to reimburse the department for the cost of the maps and the cost of providing that expert testimony as we go forward. So, that'll provide some assistance. We've had a lot of cases, actually, there, and it's slowed down our ability to maintain our property maps, so this should be, enable us to, to maintain that. The One Stop Shop was funded, and that's expected to be operational by January of 2014, for those interested. A couple of other things I'll just mention. The design studio is continuing to finalize. They've done a number, a lot of work on the Murfreesboro Road UDO, and this UDO actually will wind up possibly being a model for other corridors as we go forward. It'll be before the Planning Commission at your July meeting, and then it'll go to council public hearing, assuming the Planning Commission recommends approval in July at their August meeting, is what it's tentatively scheduled for. Ben has been working significantly with a lot of the property owners and the council members out there to develop a good UDO on that. With regard to Nashville Next, we're moving into a fairly heavy period of activity. Over the next two weeks, the Nashville Next staff is involved in 11 different events over the next 14 days, including such exciting places as the Fairlane Park Neighborhood Association, Nashville Organized for Action and Hope, the Nashville Pride Festival, the Urban League, the Nashville Next at 50 Forward, Haynes Park Neighborhood Association, Satoma Club, Etchelle Family Resource Center, the Muslim Women's Conference, the Mayor's Neighborhood Challenge, and the White's Creek Community Club, as they go out and work on that. July, however, is the month where we are going to have, we're going to have six major community meetings. We've got meetings scheduled in all segments of the community. This is for, for community-wide visioning, and I would like, we'll go a little more detail, but I would like to ask each of... but I would like to ask each of you to try to be at one of those meetings. I think, one, to see what's going on at the meetings, because this is a major visioning component of that. We've moved through the education component. We're into the resource teams now, and this is the community engagement, and we'll work with you. We have them scattered throughout the community on different nights, and then we have a summary one for those that can't be there earlier at Sunny West. And we'll go over those, and I'll make sure you're aware of those. But I want to try to, you're going to get some phone calls and communication from Kelly to make sure that we can coordinate your schedules with this schedule. And I would just like to have each one of you have those. We are in the process of initiating some special studies. I've mentioned those, but I want to mention those once again. Jefferson Street Economic Analysis is in the process of starting right now. This will include two things. One will be an analysis of African-American commercial corridors across the country, of what has worked and what hasn't worked, and ideas that might be applicable to Jefferson Street. We've done a lot of detailed work on Jefferson Street, and this is kind of looking outside of that, and what are other communities doing. We're also participating in, or we're requesting, an economic market study of the Jefferson Street market area, so that that will provide some of the background for some ideas as we go forward. We have hired professors, basically, from Vanderbilt, Tennessee State, and Mahari to do this work, and so they're going to be doing the work as part of this.
Rick, do you have any constituents who work, live, or play near Jefferson Street, involved?
Well, this is, the purpose of this is primarily for, to look outside of Jefferson Street. We're looking outside. I mean, we've involved jump and some of that, but it's not looking at Jefferson Street itself. It's looking at comparable African-American business corridors or commercial corridors around the country and seeing, are there special, unique characteristics? I mean, this is not --
Case studies.
Right. There are case studies of that. So, but we are, that's why we're working, we've got, the people that we have are very knowledgeable in terms of pulling those case studies together. I mean, it will lead to, how do we apply the findings of those case studies there? And that's when we really are trying to get --
And when you do, I hope that you look at more than just John.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
We also have, we're still working with ULI, Governor's Assistance Panel. They're scheduled right now to come in September. Hunter's kind of coordinating that. They will be looking at, kind of making it easier to do the right thing in terms of removing obstacles to development in corridors and infill areas. The suburban retrofit study, you approved that today, which was with the National Association of Realtors grant. We're really excited about that. That will actually begin, they're going to do several on the ground. We're not, we're still working on specific locations. There'll be probably one, at least one, if not two, in Antioch. But we're looking at neighborhood locations and suburban corridor locations and some intervention strategies to make those more walkable, more mixed-use, more sustainable.
I can offer suggestions.
Suggestions are not going to be difficult to get, but we'll welcome, we'll welcome all the suggestions we can get. We are also, as part of the speaker series, we're taking advantage of Chris Nelson. Chris Nelson is a professor out at the University of Utah, and he has written a book this year on restructuring metropolitan Americas. But basically, it looks at the trends in terms of housing demand, ages, and all that for the entire nation, and explores those trends and how that will influence the choices that are made over the next 20 years in terms of, and breaks it down specifically. He will also be doing that same thing for the Nashville and the middle Tennessee region. What are the specifics of this region in terms of age structure, in terms of growth areas, in terms of age of housing and all that? And so that study will be underway, and he will be coming to Nashville to do a series of presentations probably right now in October. I think he's working, he's actually going to make a keynote with the Civic Design Center, and he'll be here. It's extremely important information. His information and the study that Joe Minnacazi's doing in terms of tax value, which will be here in July to make some key presentations, are probably of the different research elements and stuff that we're doing. They're probably the two most important in terms of understanding the real impact on the ground of what's going to be happening over the next 25 years. What's the age structure? What's the demand? What's the family structure? What's the housing? I mean, he's done, he's done a lot of analysis on the typical life cycle of housing versus a typical life cycle of commercial areas, corridors, and stuff like that. So he can, he's going to be able to talk very specifically to Nashville as we go forward on that. So y'all have kind of had it a little easy on the Nashville Next components up to now, and we're going to gear this up with a little more activity and opportunities for you to be involved.
That's good. We weren't doing anything, anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Rick, I think it's important, too, with the Nashville Next, and also as a planning commission as a whole, is that at the capital improvement budget, the Bus Rapid Transit piece passed, and I'm not sure, I'm sure that we're, the planning commission and the staff are heavily involved in that. Is there the transportation piece in the, is there a transportation piece?
Yes, there's a transportation piece, and in fact, what we're working on right now is actually presenting the broader context for Nashville Next in terms of the whole system. The Mobility 2030 Plan that the commission adopted as the framework for your transportation plan included looking at an integrated multimodal transportation system that actually identified not specific locations, but corridors for long-term regional transit and intensified local transit. And what we want to do is to map that, so that we begin to put some context on how the line that's being discussed now fits within a broader scope. We're also coordinating that work with the work that the MPO is doing and the work that MTA is doing, so that we're all on the same page. But yes, we will have, we'll have a map that presents a vision, a long-term vision for mass transit.
I think that's really interesting to know, because at the council hearing, it came up that there was no other studies being done on transit, and I think that that's 100% false. I think between the MPO and Planning Commission and this community -- Turn. Who is that?
The council office.
The council office. The council office is turning me off. But I just wanted to point that out, that I think that as this is ongoing, that there are a lot of studies being done, and I want to say that I appreciate what the planning commission and the staff is doing. I want to just make sure that we're really, really involved with that personally. I used to be a transit guy, and it's near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate.
Well, it's a major element. It's interesting, because it may be the one item that has had the most comments during the period up to now in terms of our community engagement, the need for transit and need for transit options and opportunities of any item, I mean, over everything else as we've kind of gone through here. So yes, it is a fundamental part of what we're doing. The only other thing I will note is that you have your annual opportunity to participate in planning law review. We'll send this information out, but this is their APA's annual webinar on Wednesday, June 26 at 3:00. And if you need --
Is that going to be done by planners or lawyers?
It's probably going to be done by lawyers.
Well, that'll be good. That'll be good.
Yeah. Well, lawyers who are really planners at heart, or may actually be planners and lawyers, so.
Rick, I did have a question about that, believe it or not.
Okay.
I was just curious, you know, there's been times over the last few years where there are some legal planning issues and questions sort of bubbling to the surface where those were actually pretty interesting to hear about. Is there anything specific that might be addressed that would be of particular interest to you?
I haven't actually seen that. Usually, they'll do preliminary listing of what are the cases they're going to talk about, but I just hadn't seen that yet. Well, I hadn't looked, I hadn't seen it, it hadn't come across my desk, but I'll see if it is, and we'll make you aware of that. I'm sure they've done something, I just hadn't seen it.
So those items you've been going over, the opportunities, we'll be getting those with as much notice as possible.
Yes.
And you send out notices when you can about all this.
Right. We'll check this and try to get something out. I'm sure APA has the key topics, and we'll try to get that out actually tomorrow.
But all those other things, too.
And the others, right.
Sooner we get the dates, the more likely we could.
Yeah, the dates were finalized about 3:00 this afternoon, and the places. Cindy's now not on the road checking places to find, she's actually got a list.
You mentioned the one-stop shop. Do you or Doug have any comments about that? Did that --
Doug's our expert as a facilitator of that project.
I know, it passed. Are the places, are there any modifications we need to know about in terms of how much of a one-stop shop it is, and what modifications may have been made in the process?
Well, we really didn't roll out the details of it till the very end, so what modifications were made, I don't know that anybody realized, will realize the differences. The good thing is, is that every department will be represented in the one-stop shop. The idea at the very beginning of it was to make it so that residents or small business owners, people who are not familiar with negotiating their way through Metro for development, be able to come to one location and file an application, pick up a permit, meet with whoever they need to meet with, all in one spot. So if somebody has a question, and oftentimes, that is who it is. It's a resident that wants to put a deck on or an addition, or a business owner who's got a restaurant or wants to do the same, and they're just unfamiliar. And the goal was to be able to tell that individual, go to 800 Second Avenue South, and all your questions, you know, can be answered there for your development. And so that's still what's going to be available to everybody. Everybody will be able to come here, and we don't have quite the size of each department that we originally thought we were going to move into the one-stop shop, but we still are going to have representatives from all the departments.
So you may not be, you may not be moving entire offices in.
Correct. There are many other departments that will just have a satellite office there at the one-stop shop, but it'll, but it will contain the people that they need to meet with to get their permits issued.
All right. Great.
You can't see. It's behind the post.
I guess it doesn't worry you. Thank you, Doug. Any other comments from the commission? I believe we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Don't vote aye.
All in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. We're adjourned.